Okay, it's 5 o'clock. We'd like to welcome everyone here this afternoon. This is the late at night, our regular monthly board meeting, and we're going to go ahead and get started with our prayer and our pledge as we always do. Commissioner Vaughn is going to do our pledge this afternoon, and Commissioner Allison's going to do her prayer. So we'll start out with Commissioner Allison if you'd like to leave some prayer.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We just ask for your guidance for our county, for the citizens of McDowell, and just for your knowledge and wisdom as we make decisions that affect everyone. We just ask you to bless this meeting tonight, keep a hedge of protection about our people. In Jesus' name, amen.
Attention, solid pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Certainly.
Motion seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You've all had a chance to look at the agenda. Do I hear a motion we approve?
Please approve the agenda as presented.
Certainly.
Motion seconded in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the formants tonight, the first appointment we have under item A is the community health assessment on the fees that we have. Ms. Karen Vowell here for that. So Karen, we welcome you to the podium.
Thank you so much. It's good to see you and to talk about something fun and exciting and good. So thank you for letting me be here tonight on the agenda. I appreciate it. So I have two things tonight. In your packet, we sent you the community health assessment. I want to go through that, and I also want to talk about environmental health fees. So you tell me which one you'd like to do first.
Georgia will turn it up.
All right, let's do the community health assessment first. So I have that in front of me on paper, and I'll just sort of talk through it, and then you just flip through it with me inside of the case. So let me give you a little bit of background about the health assessment. So what we do is when we put this together, we do this from a lot of different people, a lot of different organizations and stakeholders are involved. We get the statistics from Western North Carolina Healthy Impact. They will do different surveys and calling and getting information and data that way. We also get it from the U.S. Census and the North Carolina Health Statistics. So all what you're going to see tonight, a lot of those statistics come from a lot of different places, not just us. And then Western North Carolina Healthy Impact collects that data and puts it together, and then they send it to us, and then we go through it and break it down into what you're going to see tonight. I'm presenting it to you tonight, but my health educator, Miranda Smith, who's with me tonight, really does the bulk of the work. She puts it all together. She makes it look great, and then she gives it to me to present to you. So she does a lot of the back work for this. Before I get started, though, I did want to mention that the health rankings for North Carolina came out last week, and McDowell County ranked 46th amongst health outcomes and 42 against health factors. So last year, McDowell was 53 in health outcomes. So that's good. So we went from 53 to 46. So that's good news. And in health factors, we went from 44 to 42. So that's really great. That means things are going in the right directions, and the health looks better for the county. So just the first couple of pages there talk about how the regions are broken down and who's involved. We do this in conjunction with McDowell Hospital, and so they'll use this data as well. So the top five highlights this year were number one was mental health priorities decreased 1.9%. Smokers went down from 21.9 to 17.7, which is great to see that smoking number go down.
Do you have a number four, those who vape? Would that be maybe a cause of reduced smokers, but they appreciate vaping?
That's right, and we've seen that for sure. And this is a really condensed community health assessment. We have a way bigger one that's about 40 to 50 pages that will have all those statistics in there, and I'll talk about that presentation in just a minute. But we definitely have those two things broken apart. Obesity increased by 8.1%. We'll talk about that a little bit more. The overall individuals who experienced overall poor or fair health decreased from 26.6 to 19.3. And the three leading causes of deaths in McDowell County are diseases of the heart, cancer, and chronic lower respiratory diseases. The next page just talks about county demographics. I won't spend a lot of time on that because you know all that information just about household income and how the county is broken down. Positive trends in community streets. We've had a decrease in high school dropouts. We always watch that because that number tends to be really high. So a decrease is great news. Secondhand smoke intake is down. Slight decreases in almost all chronic health conditions. Decrease in COPD percentage, decrease in food insecurity, slight decrease in diabetic percentages, and then a decrease in secondhand smoke intake. So good trends that were going in the right direction. It's nice to see those things go down. So negative and neutral areas for growth. Dental care. We know that dental care is a big thing in McDowell County. We need more of that. We've been looking at that for years. Mental health counseling, we know that for sure. High blood pressure seems to be going up as well as diabetes and teen pregnancies. So watching all those things too. What else affects our health? We know that employment, poverty, income, education, health insurance coverage, family and social support, community safety, and safe housing. So we know that if any of those items aren't going well, or a multitude of those items aren't going well, health will go down. So we need all those things to be positive to help the whole person be healthy. So what did COVID do? How did that impact our health? We know that stress from worrying about paying bills and rent and all those things will definitely have an impact on your health. Not receiving medical care that maybe we needed during that time. We didn't go get it. Food insecurity, and then the unemployment rate, which I think is interesting to see that we had an unemployment rate increase when there's so many jobs out there that are available. So one community leader in the surveys did say that an engaged community through local government and/or civic organizations was important, a strong economy that supports local businesses and provides good employment opportunities, high quality emergency services like police, fire, EMS, healthcare, and mental health is important, recreation and outdoor spaces, and quality housing. So it was good to get that feedback from different stakeholders when we do send out those questionnaires because it's important for us to know how they feel about what's happening in the community. So let's talk about the top three priorities this year. So the first one is lack of health insurance. Had a high percentage when we got the data back of McDowell County residents that don't have insurance. It sits at 17.6% of the county without health insurance compared to 8.7% at the U.S. level. So that's a pretty high amount of people that don't have insurance. And we know just specifically at the health department how many people we have that come through our department that don't have any kind of insurance. And so we try to make, we get grants and different kinds of ways to serve folks like that because that's why we're there is to make sure that people that can't get health coverage can come see us. But that's a pretty high percentage across the county. So programs such as MATCH are helping daily to help lower that percentage and get people involved in healthcare and get medical homes. And in 2021, 7,848 individuals in the community lack health insurance. So that's quite a few. So we'll be working on that with stakeholders and community members about how we can make sure that people that need coverage are able to get it. The second one is unintentional injuries. And from 2015 to 19, the injury rate increased from 47% to 45.1%. And the total amount of overdoses from January 1st to January of 2021 to 2022 was 153. So unintentional injuries really can combine a lot of things. But we were, I was in a meeting several months back with a lot of different emergency services folks, and we were all talking about all the overdoses in the county, which is one right after the other then. And we were watching those numbers, and now when we put this together, it was 153. And what a huge problem that is for us. So we specifically took out unintentional injuries out of all the list of things that we could do because I think that's really something we need to watch in our county about overdoses and how we can really try to get resources together to prevent that because they were just happening so fast. And watching not only drug over, unintentional injuries usually encompass a lot of things, not just overdose. It can be if a child accidentally gets run over, or if something falls on you, you fall off the house, you know, all those kinds of things. But we're specifically going to be looking at overdoses in there. Unintentional, obviously, overdoses. And then the last one is obesity. And the county sits at 42.3% for that as opposed to 34% at the state level. So that's a big difference for me to look at. In 2021, 72.4% of the population was overweight or obese. That's a lot. That's a lot. And so when I look at this, and we chose this priority for both counties because, as you know, I see most all of the death certificates for both counties. And so when COVID was going on, we started watching, and I sort of personally started researching, watching COVID deaths on death certificates. And that's when that's listed as the top death concern. So that's how the person died. That's what's listed on their death certificate. What was number two or three? And obesity, nine times out of 10, was on that death certificate. And so I started seeing a huge correlation between obesity and COVID and how they were related. And considering that the percentages are so high in both counties, I just really felt like that's something that we need to work on and see how we can get that number down. 73.3% of community leaders see obesity in the county as a major health problem. And so figuring out what we can do about that and how we can offer different kinds of resources for people to have healthier options, healthier eating choices, and places to go to get exercise and live healthier.
We just keep bringing fast food restaurants here, don't we?
We do. We do. And you know, we talk a lot, and I'm sure you've heard this, and I don't need to repeat it, but it's a lot cheaper to eat at a fast food restaurant and a lot quicker than to go to the grocery store and buy, pay more for it, then have to go home and fix it, and all those things. And so we're making those choices because they're easier, but they're certainly not better for us. So making sure that people have other options and figuring out how to make sure that they know what they are and how to get them. So those are the three priorities that we're going to be working on. We'll be having a big community event in May for McDowell County. You'll all get an invitation to that, and I encourage you to send that to anybody that you think might be interested in coming. So it's open to anybody in the community, whether they just be, you know, a citizen, or a community member, or a stakeholder, or a business owner. We want anybody that can come to come. We're going to have it in the afternoon at the Train Dico, which I'm excited about, and we'll go over the 50-page document, which shows you all the statistics and all the numbers. And then we'll talk about what people want to be involved in and how they want to help us make these priorities move forward. So be looking for that invitation. We'll get that out to you as soon as we can, and then you can hopefully, if you can't be there, just send it to anybody and everybody that you know so that we can get people there.
Do you have the programs that work with the school system to kind of catch younger adults as far as education, as far as obesity? Because I know that's, you're right about the adults. We're already there, but just trying to catch them before they get too far out of hand.
Right. Well, so one of the things that we're looking at, and luckily, we can really start this now that we've picked this as a priority, but one of the things that COVID did was some of the money that we got from the state was to get into the schools and do education. But it was really around COVID. Well, now that we're not really doing that so much, they're letting us be a little more lenient with that money and how we can spend it. So what we want to do is try to get into the schools, even not just the high school, but the younger schools, maybe the middle schools, and start talking about that. Start talking about better eating habits and how we can really address that at a younger age. But not just that, but all of our priorities. And with extra money to do that, I think we can make some headway in the school system. But a great place to start with the kids, yeah. So we'll be planning for that.
Is there any assistance as far as the health department goes in helping people sign for the government healthcare that people say is Obamacare?
Right. So we don't do that, but social services can do that. But we do have the information and resources that we give the people if they do need social services.
A lot of times, the people that don't have health insurance don't have internet. So it's a pretty big, it's a pretty big goal there.
The MATCH program will do that as well.
The MATCH will do that.
On the marketplace, it's.
Yeah, we definitely get them started on Medicaid if they need that, but they just provide an insurance. They can.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Karen, what do you think is the, in your research, what is the contributing factors to the 17.6% of McDowell County residents not having the health insurance? What was the leading factor? What did y'all find out?
Do you remember?
COVID played a big role in not being able to get out and get involved in those activities as well.
And he's on that health insurance. Did we know why people don't have it?
No, not in McDowell that it was given.
So we probably just asked them, "Do you have it or not?" And they said yes or no. Typically, we know, you know, if you're unemployed, they'll, you know, qualify for Medicaid. What I can probably say, just about our, our patients at the health department, most of them, or a lot of them, are illegal and can't get it at all. So we do have quite a bit of that of those folks that we serve. But I don't know. I have to dig into that a little bit further. I imagine the question was, "Do you have it or not?"
Okay, any other questions coming?
Okay. All right, so I will move on to the environmental health fees. These increases on your packet are in red, so they're not, they're not big increases, just small ones. What I wanted to do is give you a quick update about environmental health. And Jason, of course, is here. If you have any questions that you might want to ask him. You know, it's, I like coming to you, presenting these things to you now, just because we're in a very different situation than we were in years ago. So it's good to ask you for these things, knowing where we are. Jason tells me that right now, we have 20 applications in the stack, which averages about a two-week wait. And how we figure that is we give one application per inspector per day. So that's kind of how that measures out, figuring out what the wait list looks like. And then March was one of the top three busiest months that we've had this year. So this past year and the year before have been the top busiest years we've ever had in environmental health. So just continually busy and nonstop. So just a quick update on that. We have full staff are looking to add one more. We just lost an inspector that was just kind of a floater between two counties, so we're looking to replace her. And then, but otherwise, we are full staff in both counties. So these increases, again, are not astronomical. They're just marginal, and we did get approval from Rutherford County back in December for the same fees, but we've not implemented them yet. I was telling Mr. Woodton earlier today that we will never have different environmental health fees in the counties. So we were waiting until I could get to you guys to get approval for these.
Can you say your full stat? How many did, how many from McDowell?
How many inspectors?
Two each.
So two in on-site, two in food and lodging, and then we had the one floater, so that would have been an extra. Jason and Billy are supervisors, but they are authorized in everything. So when things get tight, they go out and do inspections as well.
Okay. Any questions coming? No, you have all that. She's looking for a, you talked over.
Yeah. So looking at your fees, we are in a partnership in the district with Rutherford County. So the Rutherford County Board of District presented with fees, and they approved that in December of December. So now the fee schedule, it looks like the average fee would go up $50, but it looks like there's 40 fees that could be applied, and only nine out of 40 are going to correct.
That's right.
Okay.
Only ones in red.
Gotcha. Ms. Karen, make a motion to approve the fee schedule as presented.
No motion seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any questions or anything else about that?
I don't have any.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Next on the performance, we have item B, which is the development public hearing. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Woodton. We have a guest here today. Introduce.
Ms. Karen, I'll kick it off and introduce Mr. Roderick in a second when you go to the public hearing. We are authorized, you are authorized to offer economic development incentives for qualifying projects. And typically, the county's participation with economic development incentives has been manufacturing. There's been exceptions to that at times. And so tonight is somewhat of an unusual opportunity for you compared to some of our prior dealings in this area. And so Mr. Roderick will come up in a second. He is representing an entity that has been in the press. The newspaper has done a really good job of talking about this project. This is the Mariana Hotel renovation, very prominent building on Main Street, on the main square in downtown Marion. Mr. Roderick, I believe about a year ago, approached some of his room, as well as city officials and media officials, with the plan intent to purchase that facility and make it, make it nice again. It's definitely not now. And so there was discussion at that point about some of the preliminary plans. And over the last couple of months, as he's been doing due diligence, he has spoken with city, county, and media officials about what is planned. And so in some of those discussions, there was discussion between city and county and Mr. Roderick about incentives that could be available depending on what is planned in that facility. So he'll talk about the economics of that renovation in a second. But what was advertised, I'll highlight, and you've discussed this, I'm sorry, reviewed this previously. We did print out, just to make it a little bit easier for you to read, what was put in the paper, the proposed incentive. And so currently, the tax value is about $250,000. And I'll talk about the planned investment. But the outcome should be a significant increase in the value based.
What would you estimate the value? That's a question ahead. What would you estimate? Just roughly.
About $4 million. And again, he'll talk about specifics, but the incentives that were advertised that you had discussed previously was the new tax value that was generated off of the renovation. So essentially, taking the existing value that's just set, and then anything generated beyond that, that would be what your incentive payment is based on. So if it's 250 now, and you just add 4 million, just for the math, it'd be, you know, $4.25 million. So the 4 million would be what the incentive is based on, not the 250. So what you've talked about is offering 100% incentive in year one, after the building is completed and the new value is assessed, 80% in year two, and then all down until after five years, it is netted out to where the entity is paying 100% of the owed taxes. Again, that's a reminder of what is in the ad. The city did a little bit different approach. They had their hearing last week. They did a 75% across the board incentive where you had a declining incentive starting 100%. So any questions about the proposed incentive before you have the hearing, Mr. Roderick, if you recognize?
The time with cities, 75% was how long?
It's all 75 years. So that would roll off.
Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and declare a public hearing session pursuant to NCGS 158-7 dot 1. Mr. Roderick, we'll allow you to come up and do your presentation.
I've been on the job site, guys. A little bit, I want myself on it, myself. So questions, anything like that? How do you want to start?
Maybe talk about.
Give it over to the projects you've done. I think that'd be important to hear.
Where we're at right now is Griffin's in there, DH Griffin's in there. Got it. So we started on April 11th in there. And y'all, what can come by and see, I had it open for the, when y'all had the yard sale happening up there, I had flag and tape, but I had about 20 folks come in. I went and just, you know, showed them around so they could see the extent of what is there. Trying to get people mentally involved in it a little bit more instead of just being there as something they've seen and just, you know, forgotten about plenty of people. You know, there's a word for it. Yeah. So it's just, so DH Griffin is gutting it. We're on the first floor. We totally, on the second and third floor, we totally took out all the, left the existing walls up, the studs, and then we just cut, gutted the cast iron, the sprinkler system, which was shot anyway, and put it all on the back parking lot. Everything's there. And on Wednesday, we have this huge lift coming in to start pulling it down into the dumpsters to haul off. First floor's been pretty much, we're in the very, very back, in the very back of it right now. We found some interesting beam sit situations, which I wasn't expecting, but would be able to. And then we go down to the rattle, the lower, the lower, lower level, which is going to be the fun, fun part. So there'll probably be another, depending upon the crew size, another two weeks.
Just a brief, for those that don't quite understand exactly what's going on, would you just give a brief vision of what your plan is about?
What we're trying to do, it all goes back to the historic tax codes for this project. That's why we had to go through this whole thing. We're, on June 2nd of last year, we had to do NSP Part 1 to make sure the building still qualified as a certified building to the district so we can get the tax credits for it. So we got the determination from the National Park Service that it did still certify. Because when the district was created in '90 or '91, the portico chair was on it, and also the four bays were still on it. In '96, they all got 12. So the National Park Service said, "We don't have to do that." And it's still keep, the building was still, you know, qualified. My plan is to put the bays back on because interior, I can make a main core going to the whole building with the new elevator and new stairway. And that has to be a trade-off with, you know, the National Park Service. So that's still in process. We submitted all that stuff to the state the first week in February, and it was supposed to take four to six weeks. I'm still waiting, even though every week I send a communication asking where we at in the whole process. The information there has to go to the feds. So this gives me a chance to really open the whole place up and really analyze it so we can see the whole thing. But what I'm trying to do is on the third floor is put five apartments on the third floor, five apartments on the second floor, three apartments in the back on the street level, and then three apartments in the back on the lower level, which is where the parking lot's at. And then put two commercial spaces in the front. Two commercial spaces will take a part, you know, half the building in the front. They won't go all the way to the back. Because that's where I'm putting three residential units. Doesn't mean the residential's more important than the commercial, just now you have a lot of online stuff going on. And also, the building will not allow any restaurants or bars. The sound noise will go up through the building. No matter how well you do what you have to do, it doesn't work. So that's basically what I'm trying to do.
So we've got, we've got a new sprinkler system going in. The one there was shot. So basically, everything's going back to the original structure.
So, basically, everything's going back to the original structure, which was built really well. And having them coming in is all brand-new, definitely brand-new.
Does anybody here have any comment that they would like to make concerning this operating? One on the left or right? Okay. Now, if you want to-
Somebody?
Have motion to slip on purpose, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, does anybody have any comments, questions?
So, let me make sure, you're going to create a, basically, that building, I've been in that building-
Yeah.
And really, it's not safe to walk through, like you said, on the lower level. And it was bad, as far as- So, you're, you're taking, you're going to take and create in that space roughly 16 residential units, with two retail spaces. So, the current tax revenue being paid or received by McDowell County off the current value of that building is only $1,520 a year. So, when it's approved, when you get complete with that project, if that building's a $4 million building, just make sure I'm right. If that building is valued at $4 million, the tax revenue that we generate off that building will be $23,100 a year. So, that's substantial for the taxpayer. So, if we are going to give him a credit, which I'm all for doing, but we got just about taxpayers, we're showing the taxpayers that we're giving them a real quick turnaround on their money after that five-year period. Because right now, you're going to get $1,520 a year for five years. So, per the scale, we're going to start receiving money quicker. And you're, and you're providing housing, you're creating retail space.
Plus, what you're doing also is having what we call "eyes on the street", which is really important. When I started my first, when we started our first buildings in downtown Nashville, in the middle eighties, it was important to get eyes on, eyes on the street, because then also that supports the local business too, which also generates tax, tax, tax revenue. So, it's a lot of, because when you look at the whole thing, you start seeing these relationships, which, 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 which come across. And what excited me about Marion, I've always been excited about Marion for years and years and years, but was just the entrepreneurial spirit that I'm seeing from Freddie and people that I'm talking to, the taco shop and now the eatery, and the Maca Brewery and the General Store. I'm just seeing, I'm seeing an internal excitement, excitement going on, which is good. Then one feeds the other, which feeds the other, which feeds the other, which ultimately creates more tax revenue, two, two at the same time, so.
Other comments?
What I would say, come by, do you see my, I have a black Ford with a shaved headache rack on it? If I'm parked out back or up front, come on in. And it's safe to go around. The pigeon. It's in bagged and all of it.
Yeah, the pigeon's basically took over the top story right here.
Pigeon's.
Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah, but it's all in the back now, it's been swept. And once we get it all cleaned out, it'll come back with shot backs and shot backs on the second and third floor. And then, first levels, looks, looks pretty good, you can peek in through the windows and all looks, all looks pretty good now. And then the lower level isn't as bad as what people think, it's just that all the stuff got pushed down now. And it's just, when we start getting into it and start taking out some force systems in there, I'm hoping to find the tunnel that shows between that building and the courthouse, as the rumor goes. And also, the tunnel goes between the building where the, you know, where refinery 13 is at, and the Mariana. From what I'm hearing, there's supposed, from rumors, there's supposed to be tunnels going between those 33 buildings. So, we'll find out.
Okay. All right, we will entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the incentive as presented.
Second. Motion, second, any other questions? All in favor of the side?
Aye.
You both. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, someone else did, so you know, just to show my resolve, I bought the house right around the corner from here, so I can be here when all this stuff is going on. So, just so you know that, it's not driving an hour each way, like I had to, I bought it.
So, you're investing even more in me down there?
Yeah, and also, something else too, we're closing on the foundation of the building on Wednesday. So, they're taking that off too. So, if you all want some free stitching, free rolls, and roll, up on the second floor, it's full of fabric, I'm guessing.
Okay, thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, item C, comprehensive land use plan update, and we've got Mr. Ron Harmon here to present that.
For your work, Mr. Harmon? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with General Statute 160D, which was when all zoning and planning statutes were combined, we have to adopt and/or update our comprehensive land use plan. Our comprehensive land use plan was adopted in 1993, and the plan has not been updated. So, this is the first update in 28, 29 years of the plan. Just a brief timeline, we had a survey that was put out to the public. We had 267 surveys returned, which is a fantastic return on surveys. The staff, staff took those answers from those surveys and developed four far-reaching goals and objectives. Then those were presented to the planning board for comments. That was then taken back to Foothills Regional Commission. They put it into a plan. They've developed a new comprehensive land use map, which doesn't change anything. It shows the two municipalities, it shows the zoned areas of the county, it shows the watershed and the floodplain. So, these are the things that developers and future homeowners will look at when trying to determine where to build. Foothills had a public input session, April 25th, from 3 to 5. There were no folks that were present that commented on the plan. And so, the planning board voted unanimously at their 20th, their April 25th meeting to recommend adoption of the plan to Board of Commissioners. So, we're asking that you put the plan on the website, we'll have a copy of the updated map, and then you set a public hearing for the June meeting. This has to be adopted by June 30.
So, you know-
That's all I've got, sir.
Just to be, first, we know action required tonight, we, maybe questions or comments?
What question, Mr. Chairman? When this plan's going to be updated, consolidated, there's not going to be anything that is added that restricts a person's private use of their land?
No, sir. This doesn't change any of the rules of the county, it basically just says that we're going to follow General Statute and use everything to the highest and best use in the county.
Any comments? Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, sir.
Next is item D, county's social media policy, and we have Mr. Maria Presswood here with us, and Maida. So, we'll let her, yeah, take the podium, start it off.
How are you?
Good.
Good. It's going to be here in a little bit of a different role. All right. Like I said, thank you for having us here today. Social media has become an important part, for better or for worse, of the daily life of most people. This creates a great opportunity for public sector entities. We have a way to reach a large portion of our residents with information very quickly. How well we utilize it is up to us. It's a great tool for recruiting for job openings, promoting events, informing residents, and helping to shape the public perception of county government. Maida and I recently attended a class through the School of Government, it's called "Social Media for Social Good." The class highlighted the importance of having a social media presence and a policy, and the best practices for both. And it also highlighted the specific requirements for public sector use. We work together on the policy you have here today. And we work to expand our audience and content on the county's existing social media platforms. Maida's going to talk to you a little bit about the policy first. She has been a huge asset to this process. She came to us with experience in running social media platforms already, and had some social media classes through her training as a fellow. So, before I dive into the policy, sorry, I was at graduation that Wednesday, it's best weekend, I had a lot of people that I loved that graduated, so I was yelling a lot, so I don't have a lot of faceless. If you look on the third page of that presentation, I'm sorry that it's not in, that would be the, that one, go back. There you go. This is the one with all the different social media pages, so that's for the Facebook pages for the county. As you can see, this is all the different departments that actually have a social media page on Facebook. That right here tells you the importance of a social media policy. We have different departments, we present different things. And while we do want to let departments have their own freedom and their own creativity to run their page as they see fit, it's important that we have a unified front when it comes to McDowell County's representation as a whole. So, the policy would serve as an outline, so if you flip to the next page, sorry. The policy would serve as an outline, necessary for approval process, so when you start a social media page, it would also serve as an outline for best practices and guidelines that all employees will follow when interacting with the public. You may be wondering, "Why are you doing it now?" Well, the last policies that was electronic based was based in 2008, and it still talks about pagers in there, and so, as you can tell, times are definitely changing, and I don't know many people are still using pagers on a regular basis. So, so as the county is growing and things are changing, it's important that we, like I said, that we keep everybody on the same page, that we have a sense of accountability for all departments, and that we keep everybody under the same standards. Furthermore, the policy is highly recommended by the School of Government. It's important for the county to have a social media policy, so that everybody can adhere to the same standards, like I said. If you flip to the next page, what is the policy content? So, the policy would have different things, from establishing a social media account, so that is the approval process, what you need to do to first have a county's social media page. Then it would go into the social media network and public record. As we all know, public records are important. And as social media is changing, we have to be aware that we have to continue to adhere to the public record policy, even through social media. So, the policy talks about that also. It also has acceptable professional use in there. So, that's content, comments, the things that we can use, our profanity and discriminatory comments policy, and all that stuff. Finally, the policy also highlights the security requirements. So, that is everything from who has access to the Facebook page, to where do we store our login information, to make sure that everything that we have stays secure within the county. The proposed policy that we have presented to, proposed, the proposed policy, sorry, has been presented to all department heads that currently have a social media active department, and we did not receive any negative feedback. So, we did give a chance for department heads to look over that, and anybody that does use social media. So, with the collaboration of the School of Government and other local government entities, we do believe that this policy is the best fit for McDowell County, and we do hope that you will approve it at next month's meeting. And I'm going to let Ms. Maria continue to talk about all the different things that have been going on through the social media page.
So, we had a little bit of a social media revamp. Our goals are to enhance the public's knowledge about local government. What value do we bring to the community, why do we do it? To interact with the public in an informative and hopefully entertaining way, to grow our audience, so that we can reach as many residents as possible, as quickly as possible in the event of an emergency situation. We also want to become a trusted source of accurate information for the community. The pandemic really highlighted the importance of that. So, to reach these goals, we need to build our presence. We're in the process of doing that by posting often and consistently, creating content that's engaging and attracts attention, including graphics and pictures with each post, if possible. Engaging with our departments and our community partners on their pages, liking their posts, commenting where appropriate. These are all things that drive likes, clicks, views, comments, shares, in the social media world, these are all good things. They place us higher than social media algorithms, which determine how many people see our posts in their feeds. So, a few stats for our current usage. Facebook has 2,735 followers. Facebook gives us some great analytics, so in the past 28 days, we have had 2,584 post engagements. So, that's the number of times that someone has liked a post, shared it, made a comment, clicked on a link that we provided, or looked through the pictures. This shows that our existing audience is becoming more engaged with the content, and we're bringing in some fresh eyes as well. We have 36,000 page likes, 35,000 followers. Instagram is brand-new, so we have 25 followers so far, we have some work to do there. But it also just not as utilized as Facebook, especially for informational purposes. Twitter, we have 629 followers, and in the past 28 days, our tweets reviewed approximately 1,900 times. So, you can see, we do, we have good reach, but we have some, some work to do to reach some more.
So, now, one more question. Who's going to tweet, is that the department heads or staffs?
This, these stats are just the McDowell County, North Carolina government page. So, those don't, that's just one, one page alone, that's not all of those that you saw. So, it's far more than that when you take into account each department. So, what did the past couple of months look like? Maybe some of you noticed a bit of a change if you follow any of the county pages. In March, we started off by increasing the number of our posts and supporting other departments' social media by resharing some of their posts, helping them get their information out. We also shared about our job openings and the openings on our advisory boards. Maida introduced me to Canva, and it's fantastic for creating some eye-catching graphics, and it's just a lot of fun to use it and have a lot of fun with it. In April, we participated in National Local Government Month, and that was, that was great. And that's across the country, counties were participating in that, making posts. We highlighted some of our departments and educated the public on what county government is and the important role that we play in the community. We're going to continue to do this in May. We didn't make it through all of our departments, and so, I want to keep that up until we make it through all of them, and then just periodically continue to educate the public on what we do and why we matter. We had a very popular post that was an employee shout-out for the transit departments, some great work that they did in the community. And so, we're looking forward to making some more posts about the great work that our employees do. I'll let Maida take it from here and talk a little bit about some of the things we're planning for the future.
Yeah, so, obviously, in the past few months, we've definitely been doing a lot of things, you know, to, I guess, wake up our social media presence. But we're not, we're not done, there's a lot more things that we want to do. One of the things that they stress in the School of Government class is to make things fun and interactive, because you want to make sure that we're engaging the community while educating them. And if it's not fun, most likely, we're not going to look at it. So, one of some of the things that we're going to do is we're going to be posting fun facts about McDowell County, historical facts about the county, things like that. We also have a plan to have like a photo scavenger hunt. So, the way that would look would be that we would have clues on a page, if that makes sense, and so, that clue would point to a county building. The point would be for a resident or a local person to come and take a picture of the outside of the building and say, "Oh, I found the building." For every picture that they get, they will get entered into a drawing for a prize. And the prize, hopefully with your approval today, would be an annual pass to the gun range and five, three sets of five-day passes. The reasons why we wanted to include the gun range is because we know, obviously, this is a very exciting project for the county right now. It would also be given back to the community and share, you know, an excitement that we have. And on top of that, sorry, the gun range is also a really good promotion for the gun range, as we are starting to get things in a group. Along with that, we will also be looking into boosting posts. So, for a feed, you can target audience, to make sure that your post and your feed is going through the right people, to the people that are in the county, people that you want to share information with. Boosting is a great idea, because it, you know, sorry, my voice. It definitely targets a larger audience, and on top of that, when you have an emergency situation, you are able to reach as many people as possible. Because where's the first place people look now when there's something going on? It's going to be Facebook. And so, that's very important, is that we do these things. So, we definitely encourage you to, you know, look at all the different things that have been going on, not only on the county's social media page, but all the other different departments. And then we want to open the floor to you guys, if you have any questions about anything.
I would say this, Mr. Chairman, I have really noticed a lot of posts coming from McDowell County's Facebook department. And it's good, I mean, it's important. Even as Commissioner, being involved in it daily and weekly and monthly, it's stuff that we talk about, but it just reinforces and reminds me as Commissioner and highlights, hey, here's some things going on in our community. And so, it's all about transparency and opportunities for people. It's good, good job.
Rich? Do you have any comments, Rich?
The winner of the scavenger hunt, some of the prizes you mentioned, would those be things horrible? Because I would say that- Because I would say that, you know, he may be able to gift that to someone, to a child, you know, maybe go out there and learn how to shoot and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's definitely our plan. So whoever would win this scavenger hunt, would definitely get in touch with Parks and Recs. And we will make sure that the annual pass or whatever passes would go to the person that you would want to use it that whole year. Or then the day passes can be used by anybody for the most part, so.
I think it's created up here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve that as presented, the scavenger hunting award there.
Say it.
Any other discussion? All papers say aye. Any vote? There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so the policy, if you have any comments about it, we'll bring it back next month. This is the first reading, the second reading.
Got them three. Old business. We'll have a American Rescue Plan update, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We try every month to keep you updated with the project ordinance amendments. We do have Amendment Four, that was in your packet. And I apologize for the lateness, but we did send out Amendment Five this afternoon, and it's on your table. And that includes the changes that were approved for payroll, I guess, last week. So we're asked for approval beforehand.
Please.
Make a motion to approve the amendments as presented to the American Rescue Plan.
Okay.
Motion to second, any other discussion? All papers say aye. Any vote? Okay. Next, we have the, being the broadband expansion, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Very brief update. You have approved a couple of months ago, providing American Rescue Plan dollars for broadband. That was made available to the two incumbent providers in the county for usage for grants they're working on that were due in May 4th to the NC Department of Information Technology. That's the GREAT grant. So both companies submitted those last week, the deadline. Of course, we're hopeful that both will be funded as appropriate. Regardless of those two statuses for awards, the next opportunity that will be available is the Completing Access, the Broadband Program, the CAV program, the low acronym. Those details have not necessarily been announced yet, but apart from there will be a grant, it was authorized in the budget passed in November, will be a grant program. It is gonna be a little bit different setup than the GREAT. And so the way I've understood it, if the GREAT is not awarded to build out to maybe close to 100% service and access to your county, CAV would be available for completing those last mile projects. So this could be another opportunity for both companies to apply and for us to participate in.
So there's, we're still trying to have basically everybody contribute to Broadway in McDowell County.
It's close, it's 100%. There's gonna be maybe a house maybe three miles off the road that Starling may be their best option. But for everyone else where there is density, both have said that is our goal. Because they're in almost, they are in a competitive nature now where years ago, they had carved out areas. But they're in the point now where they're essentially wanting to compete with each other, which is great for the consumer. But they want to cover out these last mile areas as much as possible. So as I understand it from the broadband office, it will take at least a month, probably a lot longer than that, review all the applications, because I'm sure there are a ton. So it will take some time. Keep your posted.
Any other questions, comments on that? No action required, we'll move on. Next on the unit is the building broadband project, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. Just quickly about this building. The certificate of occupancy was issued last week for the entire building. The contractor has moved all site. If there's some potential items that come up, you will come back. But the other ones, the building is complete. And we have scheduled move-in for early June. We're waiting on some network work to happen before we're able to move in. Things outside our control. The Emergency Services Headquarters is also wrapping up over the next week or so. They have scheduled move-in starting next week. It'll take a lot of time there. Still do not have the backup generator installed. So that's something that we're just continuing to work on.
Mr. Wood, what would they do with the current generator at the current site?
It is too small for the headquarters. We have talked about moving that to Station Four. We have a grant submission for both of those generators. So we have talked about moving the one that's at Station One to Station Four on the interim, but it's too small. So we will schedule the ribbon cutting probably later this month with you and Mr. Carr. Could be a time for you. We're working on the services building, the request for qualification for architecture services. That will hopefully go out next week for that work. And we talked about paving last month. We have posted a request for qualifications for engineering services. We have received, I believe, three inquiries from engineers, and the deadline for that submission is May 19th. And so our goal is to have those reviews and engineer selected, contract negotiated, all that by the end of June in order for that assessment process to start as soon as possible. Any questions about any of those projects, highlights?
No questions or comments on that? No action required, we'll move on to the next one.
The water system project, Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. So we've got a lot going on in the world of water as well. Probably about three or four months ago, you authorized the design and permitting for what we're calling Phase One of the Nevo Water System Expansion. Don't have a map in your packet, but if you're looking at the area north of US 70, north of Nevo Elementary School, northwest, this is the area. Jack Corpring Road, Nema Gimsy Road, Bedwood Drive, Old Number 10, couple other roads in that neighborhood that were identified several months ago. So that work is underway. We're meeting with the engineers Thursday to review preliminary plans for that. About two months ago, you authorized what we're calling Phase Two. That is essentially coming westward back towards the city of Marion. So we're meeting, at that meeting Thursday, we will talk about that design work and getting that project going for Phase Two. And so we will keep you informed about both phases as they proceed. Also in the Nevo area, we talked last month, you authorized the submission of an application for a relatively small service area for Habitam Hollow Road. Mrs. Sani and Mr. Silver worked diligently, is probably an understatement. I believe it was about 150 pages, I think, the final application. I've been doing this job 20, in the county government, 20-plus years. And I don't think I've ever seen a grant application that required that much detail. But they did a great job working on that and getting that submitted by the deadline. So we'll note on that one. Again, a lot of applications, I'm sure, so it'll probably take at least a month. And so moving outside of Nevo, we talked about service to the West Marion Elementary area. And when we started looking at that particular grant, it scored very poorly. An application did due to the lack of information we have about the service that is needed in that area. We have a little bit, but not enough to really have a suitable application. So we talked about maybe putting together a study. I have spoken with a couple of different engineers that might have some interest in doing what's called a preliminary engineering or PER. One that has looked at the area before is a firm called Withers Rappinall. They do a lot of work for the city in their water sewer system. Don't have pricing right now, so if you wanted to at least authorize getting a price from them to do the PER, I could bring that back next month.
Say it. Second. Motion to second, any discussion? All papers say aye. Next is on me, Parks Recreation Project, Mr. Wood.
Just updates at this point. You had the official ribbon cutting at the shooting range last Monday. They opened to the public on Wednesday, the 4th. So including Saturday, I guess they've had four days of operation. And we've not termed it as such, but essentially what you've got is a soft opening. We've done a little bit of promotion on social media. We got our staff and Mr. Marsh's staff have done a good job of that. But we've not really gone gamebusters with a lot of advertising paid, like has been talked about on Facebook and others. And we've had steady interest. And so a lot of people have come out and just to check it out. And we've had some season passes sold, which is great. And so the early interest has been very positive. And the staff have been, had the opportunity to get comfortable positions, so that's exciting. Did, going back many months, this board has requested that the entrance road be paved all the way to the top, not just to the bridge. We mentioned that was a budgetary issue early on. I mentioned, I believe, at a prior meeting that, while laughing, indicated that that could count as a maintenance project in the future year where they could come back and participate in that 9% level on paving the road if the county did the 10%. I did email, and I said, what do you need? Do you need a letter, resolution, a visit drawing? What does it take to get this going? Email was the first start. So I sent an email about three weeks ago requesting that be added to the queue of maintenance projects. And so I did again a follow-up for Mr. Bailey with what I like, and that is being reviewed. So I don't have a timeline, but I know everyone here's preference would be as soon as possible. We'll continue to push for that, because I know that was a great opportunity.
Let me add, Mr. Bailey, if you can, if you have anything to ask him about, he has it as well.
On the Recreation Center project, again, this is related to the state funding that was received in the budget passed in November. The architect, Holland and Hammerick, has been on site as recently as Wednesday to do some site visits and discussions with Parks Recreation staff. The Atlantica architect who's worked for Holland and Hammerick is also present. And so hopefully, within the next months, we'll have some rubber arms for you to look at to make sure we're on track to some of your prior communications and preferences. So I would say we're probably quite a few months out from being able to be at the point of advertising at least three or four, not longer. Want to make sure everything is how you would like it to go before it's put out to the, but everything else so far is very positive.
Okay, thank you for your update.
And a quick update on the Maple Leaf Playground and Technic Shelter project. I have worked on a grant personally, and Mrs. Sani has worked on one, I believe, a T-Mobile grant. She has also looked into a grant with the Parks Recreation Trust Fund. It's not a part of, it is a playground grant application. And so that is something that we continue to work on for the next couple of months. It may be that we're, you've previously authorized funding using ARCA funds for this project. We've talked to, Mr. Marsh and I and Mrs. Sani talked about a phased approach where we might have to do the site prep, maybe sidewalk, and picnic shelter to get that done as you've requested. And then maybe come back as grants allow, playground shortly thereafter. And not just keep waiting, waiting for a grant, just kind of get going with the preliminary available cost. Any questions about those funds?
No, we'll give both of those grants. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on. Next on the agenda and new business, it's gonna be personnel policy with a few requests, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. I mentioned to the chairman earlier that we've got a relatively new human resources director. And sometimes a new set of eyes will see things maybe a little bit differently, ask questions that we've not thought about before. So we have noticed a few things and looked at our policies. And even before Ms. Lee was higher, I noticed a few things that might need to be reviewed by an employment law attorney, which we've not done in probably five or six years. So we have requested that we be allowed to just take a good look at the personnel policy. Not recommending that we do new things that you've not talked about, but just make sure that what we're doing in policy and practice is reflected in the black and white text.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the request by staff to review the personnel policy and bring back documented with changes or with no changes.
I'd like to go ahead and mention too as well, I made the suggestion to Mr. Wood that we do a total policy study on all our policies and see if there needed to be some corrections on some of the other policies. I know I've got a couple in mind that I think we need to work on. So I would like to see a study done on all the policies personally.
I would amend the motion to state that staff can review and have the authority to review all policies.
Say it. Any other question on that? All papers say aye. All right, next I'd be, new business is the Glenwood-Goatam Road closure request that we receive every year.
Yes, sir. This is for June 4th on Pally Spout Road. This is for the Gold Rush Run, five feet, they've held for about four or five years now.
Make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Say it. Motion to second, any other discussion? All papers say aye. Mr. Wood, demonstrate about it.
Thank you. You've got quite a few items here. Would you like me to read them all and then vote on them separately?
Mr. Chairman, we've got up to you to look at these and read those and ask questions. So we'll save you a little work out there, Mr. Wood.
I'll take it.
All right, I make a motion to approve as presented.
Say it. Motion to second, any other discussion? All papers say aye. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Down to tax matters.
Usually I say these are routine and the, what we call tax matters are. But you do have a memo and a resolution, if you're so inclined, from the tax collector indicating that we have a minimum bill of $3.01 right now. Anything below is not billed because it costs more to generate the bill and collect. And with increased postage, staff time, et cetera, she's requested that to go to $5.01 being the minimum bill that's sent out.
Please report, take it up from three of one to five of one.
No question we do that, that's stated.
Say it. Any other discussion? All papers say aye.
Did the motion include the tax matters?
It did, I think she included that. Okay. Now to board appointments, Mr. Wood.
Would you like your clerk to handle those?
Yes, I'll have clerk to handle that.
Okay, as you see, it's the first reading for the McDowell Tech Board of Trustees. Randy Hallfield's position is up, and he has requested not to be reappointed. So I'll be advertising that, getting applications for that. It's also the first reading for the Foothills Workforce Development Board. You'll see two applications out there. The membership of that board is very specific. And so the consortium is requesting the reappointment of Mr. Mark Weber. of Mr. Mark Weber, the plant manager of Key Gas Components, and Nikki Pittman of Columbia Forest Products, representing the private for-profit business sector. Both have been members and attended, are in good standing of the Regency Workforce Development Board. Their term will be for three years. Also, it's second reading for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and there are six vacancies, and you see all of those applications. I have the ballot sheet here. There are certain designated positions, and I have separated those on your ballot sheet. These are the volunteers for the six vacancies that the commissioners appoint. These you also appoint, but they're designated positions, and on your memo, I have put out which ones they are for. We also have a second reading for the Agricultural Advisory Board. We have two applicants, and we still are going to be advertising that, but you would like to go ahead and get those two approved, if you would like.
So Madam Clerk, the six names that we have, and then on the ballot sheet, for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, sir.
You only have six, you got six spots right now.
Yes, sir. That was every application that I received.
Are these current, any board members?
None of those six. No, they are not.
They were probably getting big volunteers serving that board there. Is that issue? You're on the.
Yes, they have had trouble with that. In fact, they took away some of your appointees' vacancies, so it looked like they had more people attending, and this will put those spots back on to their board.
Again, on the Agriculture Advisory Board, you need seven, and I have two applicants.
That's correct. Five must be in agricultural farming, and one of those applicants does have agriculture farming, it's Lynn Khan. I will keep advertising that. That board used to be active, and Matthew Bernison, and Kid McDowell Beautiful, and Parked and Extinction is reorganizing that board.
Now, these are all going back, so there's no need to really mark those, those are the designated.
As long as you approve the reappointment. A little more detail than we usually do.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
The vote is unanimous, and so I will notify all of these applicants.
Next, we have citizen comments. If anybody wishes to speak, they need to sign up.
We do have sign.
Nobody have signed up? That was it?
That was it.
Okay. Moving along now to Mr. Staff reports. Anyone have anything?
I don't.
Just to note that this Thursday, you have the legislative breakfast that Maida and the chamber co-boosting, that evening, you also have the meeting with the Fire Commission. Make sure you have reminders of that. I believe that's all.
Okay. At this time, go ahead and motion, we go into closed session. Check to NCTS 143-318, dot 116.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Say. Motion and a second. All papers say aye. Okay, got your motion, go to closed session.
Say.
Say.
Well, we're going to make a motion to recess, I think, until.
I'd like to make a motion to recess till May 12th, 6 o'clock, at the emergency, is that correct? Or is it going to be for the.
Is it personal?
Yes, May 12th at 6.
Good. But recess till May 12th.
You got it. You got better on the going out of closed session. We didn't do that yet.
Oh, all right.
There's a motion and a second in the vote there.
Yeah.
To go out to closed session.
Okay. We got a motion, we got a second. All papers say aye.
All right. Now I'd like to make a motion to recess until May 12th, 6 o'clock.
Say.
Say. Any comments? All papers say aye. Okay. We are adjourned to recess.